Okay folks, we're gonna call the Huffington Special Town Council meeting of December 9th, 2019 to order with a normal Southern meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight is, uh, we're just resuming the hearing from the last Monday on a request for an amendment to the Huffington Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map and amendment to the Huffington zoning ordinance filed by Centrica Business Solutions, 14 Agent York, Canada, and Bradley Sweet, TFW, Hano, Maryland, 20376, and Karen Hammond, James Duckey, Shremsia, Jr., 201 Chase Hill Road, Ashway River Island, for property located at Chase Hill Road as Pla 2 Lot 32 in RFR 80 Zone, continued from November 25th, 2019. The applicants propose to construct a 2.7 megawatt DC ground mount solar installation on 12.89 acres of property on assessment Pla 2 Lot 32. The proposal to utilize the property will require approval of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map amendment from low-density residential to commercial and a zoning map amendment from RFR to commercial. The applicant's present, Steve Chin. Where is Attorney Sir?
He was gonna be here earlier than I was.
He's not here?
Yeah.
Alright, so, I know that Attorney Sir, to the applicant, I emailed myself and Kevin, he didn't have any additional witnesses for tonight. Um, there's one lawyer that he has to get, uh, requested counsel to power, which I'm interested in, but he's not here tonight. So tonight, basically, uh, will be a public comment period. We will hear first, I guess, the Butters, and they'll receive notification from the town first, and then anyone else after that. Now, is Attorney Donald here?
Yeah.
Is it Donald? No, he's not. Is he gonna come, Eric?
Uh, naturally.
Okay. Alright, so, we're gonna start with, um, yeah, I know Scott has a question to the applicant, but, uh, I guess we'll start with that, Scott, and then I'll start in with the public comment. My Butters, Scott, go ahead.
I'd like Mr. Shremsia and those two proposers to give a word to council for the question, please. Good evening. Uh, the Town Council is required to represent people of Town, Huffington, and also maintain the estate at the center of the town, and also try to inform the board of the town and various other things. And, uh, it's very important for a Town Council amendment to listen to what the public feels, try to strike a balance between what the neighbors feel and what the applicant feels, and not exactly do you think. Uh, the Town Council has legislative priority and prerogative, uh, and the Town Council can say to any applicant that you cannot have your zone changed, so whatever zone that you're in, you have to comply by that rule. And I don't think it's a sentiment of the town, I know you can be disappointed with me saying, but I don't believe the opinion of the Town of Huffington, they don't wanna go for any more big solar, so I cannot support or make it. But I'm willing to consider, and I'm not gonna make a promise, I wanna hear what other people think, the neighbors and other people think, on this proposal. But when I, earlier this year, the Town Council came up with this idea, and I know you applied for this with enacted, but also the Town Council, even under the old system, still had the legislative priority to say no. We never lost that, that ability to say no. Uh, would you consider, and I, like I said, I'm not gonna promise I'm gonna vote this way, because I wanna listen to what the public think, but would you be amenable to the ordinance that we enacted, uh, excuse me, enacted in January, saying, uh, three acres or less of solar? And, uh, uh, because we have a lot of rural areas where you have small solar, I know Simplicity Farms from Dan Kirk, Detroit, Reynolds Farm, uh, but 12 acres, these would be very, very loud, and I wanna listen to what the neighbors say, and what the public say, and, uh, I just wanna listen to the argument, but, uh, what would your opinion on that?
So, before you answer that, Jim, just get it explained, raise your hand to the question.
Keep it silent, it's ready. I just want you to get it.
If you wanna answer Scott's question, or you wanna wait with?
I disagree with the council, if you believe I agree with my lawyer.
Okay.
I, yeah, I, I will be okay with moving things, I just, you know, I don't know what to say about giving something.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna start the public comment phase, okay? So, anyone who's, uh, in favor of receiving notification from the town, wishes to comment from the Town, make some remarks on a particular application of ours tonight, um, I'm going to, again, limit the comments from the public to 15 minutes or less, till everyone gets a chance to speak, and then if we have more time, I'll go right back around. So, whoever is in the Butters, that would like to speak, to the council on this matter, please give their name, address, and, uh, floor or show.
Um, Clifford Hale, uh, 211 Chase Hill Road. Um, I wanted, uh, first, uh, actually have a letter that I-
Yeah, let's make sure you're speaking in my-
Okay, no, sorry. Um, first, uh, I'd like to read a letter that I composed on behalf of the Butters, and, uh, I actually got several of the Butters' signatures, so, um, "Members of the Huffington Town Council as the Butters to the property located at 201 Chase Hill Road, Ashway River Island, we are writing to express our vehement and unequivocal disapproval of the proposed amendments to the Huffington Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map and the Huffington zoning ordinance filed by Centrica Business Solutions and James and Karen Shremsia, in which they are requesting amendment from low-density residential RFR 80 to commercial and only to construct a 2.7 megawatt DC ground mount of solar installation on 12.89 acres. Above mentioned address and address of Pla 2 Lot 32. Our neighborhood has already been negatively impacted by the installation of a national grid substation flooding and/or within view of many of our homes. The approval of the aforementioned amendments and proposed solar installation would further more directly negatively impact our properties and our lives. Our properties and our houses are not only investments in our future, they are homes in which we raise our families, build relationships with our neighbors, become part of the community. Activities such as those proposed by the Shremsias and Centrica Business Solutions will forever alter the rural character of our town and our neighborhood, and perhaps worse, erode the fabric of the neighborhood and the community that has made all of us want to call Huffington our home. Furthermore, we agree with the Huffington Plan Board's assessment that this activity is not consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you for allowing us to voice our disapproval of these proposed amendments. We urge you to consider the negative impact these amendments would have on the Butters, the neighborhood, the community, and our children and grandchildren. Sincerely, the 201 Chase Hill Road Butters. Uh, I'd like to submit this record-
Just give it to me.
Do you have any questions?
Can you tell me someone who's on the phone?
Okay, so, um, uh, so I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, I think there are 10 Butters, and I got signatures from seven of the 10, um, and I just, I was not able to get in contact with the other three, so, uh, on here, just for record, I just noted not available for the people that I printed signatures for, so.
Mr. Hale, uh, good evening. Uh, the county attorney and I remarked a minute ago, and what the council said earlier this year, uh, on the solar issue, but, uh, I'm having three acres or three, uh, three percent or less, that concept was adopted in January this year.
Excuse me, I'd like to object to this, I don't think it's-
Sorry, you can't object.
Wait, excuse me, can I just explain my objection to you, for all that are here?
You can't object from the floor.
We're here for a proceeding on a specific plan, I don't think we can have a speculative hearing on a hypothetical plan-
You cannot object from the floor.
-I agree to some-
You cannot object from the floor. Sorry, Scott, please continue.
Inappropriate.
The question is that, the problem is elevated a lot, and you can try to say compromise, sometimes you can't have compromise, and you can just say no. Bottom line is that it's flawed with hatred, I'm definitely not holding against it, I have a feeling. And the fact of the matter is, what this council did to try to work with people, recognizing the importance of working neighbors and things like that, we enacted an order. Now, this proposal would've been submitted before that, that point, at that timeframe, but the Town Council has legislative priority to, uh, address things and either agree or not agree. So, my question to you is, it's not hypothetical, the bottom line is, if you believe, and I like to look at it, but, like I said, I cannot promise to vote, I put that out because of what happened earlier this year, and try to compromise or try to get a feel. And the government politicians, a lot of them don't ask questions, they just make assumptions, so I'm asking you, as the first, I listen to Chase Hill area, what would you feel if it was allowed and it was three acres or three percent or less of that property, and they had solar and not the 12 acres? That's my question, I think that's a relevant question.
That's not the hearing record.
Eric, Eric, please, let me, this one.
Um, I wanna object for the record, please.
You can object on the record, but, again, we're gonna hear the, the Butters.
Okay, I object for the record.
Please continue.
Um, first of all, uh, I'll comment generally about this, and not specifically towards their plan, because I do agree, at least in part, with what Eric is saying, that this might not be the time to discuss alternative plans without actually seeing-
How's the vote, Jim?
Generally, but, but generally-
Just answer the question, anything, anything?
If, if there were, first of all, I'm not against solar installation in general, I think it's a good idea, why appropriate, why we're following the appropriate ordinances of the comprehensive plan. Three acres would certainly be far better than the 12.9 that is currently proposed, and that is going to come right up against the property lines within the 25-foot abating area. So, three acres is better in a general context, again, okay? Um, however, you know, I, under that, it would have to be completely, absolutely out of sight of anybody's bought-in property, because despite what the appraisers are saying with respect to property values, I've read the reports that are out there, the general reports say that there is not an effect on the property values, as a whole, in general, but the reports also say that the immediate Butters are going to have a negative impact on these property values. So if you look at it as a whole, you can say, okay, it's not gonna negatively impact, the residents around it, except for the Butters. So, the only way that I can even generally consider something like this would be, if it was nowhere near Butters property, not, not, you can't even see it when all the leaves are up the trees. Having said that, this is still, we're still talking about rezoning residential area to a commercial area, I believe, right? In order for that to happen, it would still have to be commercial. On that fact alone, considering what we talked about at the workshop the other day, where we are already at 98% of the town's energy usage and our production, the load numbers suggested it was 98, or 94%, someone suggested it might be 200%, right? I think under, especially under that principle, or that fact right there, um, and I think Sylvia said that, that she's not willing to, uh, change any residential areas anymore to allow for solar projects, and frankly, I agree with that, I agree with that even beyond creating our, our energy needs, you know, but, so, three, generally, three is better, but I'm still not saying that that makes me- Along those lines, I understand your point, Scott, that we need to, it's, it's, I realize that you guys are in a very difficult position here, right? You're trying to make the difficult decisions for the town, you're, I'm sure your best interests are for the town as well. I understand that we need to be willing to compromise, or at least have discussion about compromise. Um, I would say that in this particular situation, I am no longer willing to even have a discussion with the applicant, considering the recent events, okay? I might have been willing to sit down and talk about a potential change to three acres, three acres versus 12, but after recent events, as far as I'm concerned, that's off the table, and not because of my actions, okay, because of the applicant's actions. And, you know, as you guys are aware, the coffee- Um, one more thing, the, uh, I'm shocked, frankly, that the developers and the applicant did not provide the materials to the town clerk's office that the Butters could actually look at, all the materials that you guys would provide in, out of the last hearing. If they're trying to, this is a simple thing for them to accomplish, I assume, you know, we vote and copy everything that they give to you guys, put it in the binder, and drop it off. They couldn't do that in order to provide us with the materials to prepare for this meeting. Fortunately, I was provided a spare copy from the town clerk's, so I could actually look at some of this stuff, which I appreciate. But how are we supposed to put any faith in the developers, that they're gonna follow through with the decommissioning, deforestation, all of the promises that they were making to you guys at the last meeting? I, I, you know, it was clear what you guys were doing, just, we were trying to figure out, how can we, how can we feel good about them putting in an installation like this? You know, Barbara, it seemed like you were trying to come up with some reasonable, um, and I, I don't know if it was gonna influence your voting or not, but you were looking for ways that you could say, maybe this is something that's viable. They couldn't provide us with the reading materials for, for two weeks, they had nine months at least to prepare for these hearings. We were asking for two weeks, which, you know, with day jobs and everything else, is barely gonna be enough for us to do a thorough job. So, you know, considering that and other things, I'm gonna have a really hard time negotiating and trying to come to a reasonable and equitable solution for everybody in the neighborhood. Um, I think that's all I have to say.
Yeah, well, thank you, Tim. I would say that I believe that you're coming, have a good relationship with the neighbors, providing information, and I think, I think I can speak for the council on, at least at least this point, that people are frustrated by the council, we've been, been months, this Town Council, I thought, we've got all sorts of personalities here, haven't been treated with the respect that we're out of quality of shit to them. Uh, it's ridiculous, of all these delays, and, uh, who missed solar there? Uh, my, my question was, based upon what the council did months ago to try to work with people, and, uh, as I stated, I want to look at the public, they're gonna stick with 12 acres, Scott, I'm gonna vote no, absolutely, we take it for the bank. Uh, but if the neighbors feel that that, that work will compromise, I will listen to them also, my job, my responsibility, and I'm accountable to the bonus of this town, that's the way the system works. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, brother, appreciate it. Any other Director Butters have received notification from the town?
Good evening, Town Council. I'm Nikki Ann Grohl Scott, I live on 187 Chase Hill Road, you did invite me, um, by registered letters, or by letter, to be here, I am there, my husband and I own property 30, which abuts property 32. I also wrote to all of you and expressed my opposition and why, and said that when I had the opportunity to speak to the Town Council at a public hearing, that I would speak briefly, I drew some notes, and I'm going to read them, it's not gonna take a lot of time, um, it will explain my perspective and my value system, and maybe make it more of an understanding for my neighbors and everyone about why I personally feel the way that I grew, and why I am opposed to this project. In the Bible, Galatians 4 has a section about slaves and sons. It is about whether we are stewards of something that God is letting us borrow, or if we are heirs of what by birth is now ours, because of our relationship with him. My husband and I may be owners of property 30 that abuts property 32, but we are stewards. We take care of the land that we have been trusted. I am an heir of property that was bought by my grandmother in 1942, she sold her diamond ring to buy that property. My grandfather, Peter Grills, was a good steward of the land. He was tragically killed in February of 1964 on the property with his John Deere tractor, when it tipped over and crushed him. He was 59 years old. His sons, my father Peter Grills Jr., and my uncle, Richard Grills, were good stewards of the land. They would tell us, when you take down a tree, you plant another tree in its place. They made the property, and the property in the area pristine. They are now both deceased. My sister, who sits next to me tonight, Dina Grills Petrowski, and her husband are owner and heir of family property. My cousin Michael, who sits in front of me, and his wife are owner and heir of family property. They are all stewards of the land. We are the gatekeepers for the future generations. We are not just the owners, stewards and heirs, but the children of stewards, and the character qualities of our family are what we carry in our hearts and determine how we use the land. We were taught to beautify and nurture the land. Therefore, it is my responsibility as an heir to speak up about my opposition to a solar farm on Chase Hill Road and mine. I do this with respect for the generations before me, my grandmother, my grandfather, my parents, my uncle, my aunt, all deceased. And for the generations after me. The consequences of how we deal with this will affect all of us. With all of that said, I have concerns, aside from the obvious ones, which I wrote to you, about destroying our natural habitat, taking down trees, and the health concerns that can happen because of solar farms. But I really have a concern about the hearing that I was at, and the factual information. There was a lack of factual information. I was told I was going to a hearing for 12.89 lesser minor, minus acres of a solar farm. When I got to the hearing, it went up to 21.2, or 21.3, I don't understand, I don't work from that place, I work from a place of fast. The land usage, we were told, after 20 years, that's when solar farms, um, lose their, their power. So they might be done with the, the solar, and then that sole, that, that land would go to the land reserve in Huffington, or maybe it will continue as solar. I don't know, no one knows. I asked the council, please keep residential zone, RFR 80 residential, please do not spot zone, it's residential for a reason. Chase Hill Road is a rural country road, it is relatively narrow, with corners, shop corners, I think it would be dangerous to have an accessway where big trucks were coming out, and this would cause unnecessary stress and the quality of life that we all enjoy living on Chase Hill Road. There's something to be said for people that have pride in their land and where they live. And I respectfully say to the council, that I ask you, please take that into consideration. I appreciate that you have allowed me to speak to you, please be mindful, I have nothing against anyone, that comes from my heart. Very, very hard for me to tell you all of that, because it's personal, I didn't wanna bring my maiden name up there, to, in front of the town. Okay, I'm Nikki Scott, I had to tell you I'm Nikki Ann Grohl Scott tonight. I come from a long legacy of people, and I'm proud of it. And I've been part of Ashway my whole life, and a resident here my whole life, and I hope you do the right thing, and it's nothing against this family. Okay, thank you very much for your appearance.
Good evening, uh, Town Council, Mr. Donkey. My name is, my name is Stephen Scott, I am a property owner, own my wife, and my son Steve Jr., my daughter Vanessa, own Chase Hill Road. Uh, I've been a resident for over 60 years in Town, Huffington, but 30 of those have lived on Chase Hill Road. We've worked hard on a property, to keep it looking the way it is, uh, keep it pristine, keep it nice, and, uh, we take great pride in that. I think for the whole solar farm, for the record, and for what we are considering, I am opposed to the commercial zone change, and more of the solar, if you had a smaller age, but that's neither here nor there. The zone change to commercial, I think, is, uh, is, is not a good thing to Town of Huffington, and to spot zone, uh, for the usage of solar, I think, uh, is not a good idea. I feel it is the, uh, responsibility of the citizens and the Town Council to keep in mind that the people elect you for a reason, and that reason is to take into consideration these special usages and to make the right decision. That's all I have to say, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
I would, I would like to say for the record that Stephen knows Scott as my second cousin and, uh, grandparents and siblings, and know that the people who know the family will understand that, in case of anything said, I wanna state that now.
You're related to him?
Yes, sir.
Just kidding. Any other Director Butters, folks, to the project?
Good evening, my name's Rajanukowski, and I am the sister-in-law of Ted Diane, who lives at 199A Chase Hill Road. Uh, his property happens to be in trust, and I am the trustee, uh, and an owner of that land, uh, and improvements. He is unable to be here this evening because of very critical health issues, some of which have been the result of the solar application. He vehemently objects to this construction of solar, abutting his property, and it has been a serious concern for him since it was announced. That being said, the objection is really with regard to the rural character of the community in which the, uh, families live on Chase Hill Road. When you combine that with the spot, um, change in the zoning, and also the fact that you are trying to use both commercial and residential on one property, it may be a very complicated situation. situation and one that doesn't really support the nature of that community of our Chase Hill Road. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
John McCaskin, my husband's husband, brother-in-law Ted Dian. We are residents in Hopington, we live on Chase Hill Road. But my brother-in-law just basically wanted me to speak for him at this meeting. First of all, he is totally one hundred percent against solar panels or solar farm building into the property mix. He feels, and what he knows for a fact, that as he walks down this property, when he panels go in place, he will be able to see the root problem. He feels that this will be a very large deterrent to the beauty of the area and the pristine of the area. Second thing is, is that he feels that it is going to devalue, you know, his property. I know there were reports that said otherwise, but just as a power transfer station has negative effect on abutting property, why wouldn't solar farms or solar panels have the same thing on abutting property? It just not, it doesn't make sense that one can do it without the other. I was up there working on this land yesterday and one thing I did notice too is that Chase Hill Road, there was a very, very high water table. I was out in his yard and it was like a sponge. Now, just looking forward, this, the solar panels, to my knowledge, and I did look at the property from the other side of the property, is on a hill. If there is a very high water table, if something toxic falls on the ground, I know there's a brook or it's a stream down below, what's going to stop this toxin, whatever it is? I don't care if it's something from the panels themselves, I don't care if it's something from, you know, how do you control plants growing underneath in solar panels? Probably somewhere they can spray or besides. But this has a possibility of going into a water supply. Heaven forbid it goes into someone's drinking water. The last thing is, what my brother-in-law said, is that Chase Hill Road and that section is residential. It's very, it's very critical. And solar panels do not belong in a residential area. Period. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, could you give me the address?
Of, on Collins Road?
No. No, Ted's, Ted's.
One ninety-nine A Collins Road.
Chase Hill Road.
Chase Hill Road. One ninety-nine A Chase Hill Road.
I know Ted's concerned about this and he is quite concerned. I'd please convey to him my best wishes, really health concern. And he's really, I know he'd be here and he's really into this issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Scott. Any other abonors to the project, folks? Any other abonors, okay? Yes, next, just non-abonors.
Joe Moreau, Oldy Moreau. I just want to address a couple of points that Scott mentioned. This property is not a farm. It's residential property. It's a little bit of split zone. It's a new project, it's a new notifications. It does not conform with our ordinance. The application was date stamped, I believe, January seventh, two thousand and nineteen. So it's clearly under the old ordinance. I want to echo something that Chip mentioned. The attorney, the developer, had two weeks to provide a binder so that the abonors could look at this project. That was not given to them. Barbara had some questions and I had some questions about the electrical portion of this project. We'll get an electrical contract here, I believe is the word. I don't see that person. There's two promises that I've heard in two weeks and nothing has happened. And the only reason I'm talking about that is because Scott had mentioned it. My main point tonight is that, first of all, I would like to thank Karen and Jim Schurentia for that nice story at the November eighteenth meeting. The original plans were to purchase the property and eventually their children would build houses and would live on that property. Probably would be like the family compound, which is located right next to two oh one Chase Hill Road's one ninety-nine A. What I mainly want to talk about is my friend Ted Dian. I was out in my yard around March of two thousand and nineteen and I heard something pulling my driveway and I went out there and I looked and it's a white Jeep. I'm thinking, well, that's a good start because I have a white Jeep. So this pulled time to get out and he said to me, you're Joe Moreau? And I said, now all depends who's asking. Are you packing? And he leans against his car like this and he said, no, I'm not packing. I said, good, let's have a little chat. We spoke for an hour. And during that time, I realized I have a new friend. Who is Ted Dian? And how does it relate to the hearing? Ted and his wife Marietta live at one ninety-nine A Chase Hill Road. Ted was born in Wesley, he's going to kill me for saying this, in nineteen thirty-three. He had two brothers in the system. He quit school in nineteen forty-six when his father died to help his mother support their family. He went to work learning how to repair electrical motors. Should have mentioned this in the beginning. I met, I see Ted probably three or four times a month. I was at his house. He did give me permission to talk about this. He worked for about five years repairing electrical motors. Ted was going to join the Navy, but his brother joined the Army ahead of him. So Ted continued to care for his family and help support him. When Ted's brother was discharged, Ted joined the Navy and was in for two years. Ted started to work for Colvage Marina in Warchild. Ted was there for two weeks when the owner of the business was lost at sea on a sailboat. Ted ran the business while the owner's son was in college. The plan was for the son to take over the business, but the son was killed in a car accident. In nineteen fifty-nine, Ted and a business partner bought the Connison O'Brien boatyard in Parketuck, Connecticut. And nineteen sixty-six, Ted and Marietta bought property at one ninety-nine A Chase Hill Road, right next to this project. In nineteen sixty-nine, they built a home that they currently live in. They've lived in that home for fifty years. It's a beautiful piece of property. I never realized what Chase Hill Road was really like until I went to see my friend In nineteen eighty-four, Ted sold the business to retire. As I said at first, I met Ted in March of two thousand and nineteen. We would visit each other three or four times a month. We'd sit in his workshop and as Ted would say, excuse me, just like to shoot the shit. He had his fire on and we had a good old time talking about the area. All spring and summer, Ted was the healthiest eighty-six-year-old person I've ever met. Things changed in the fall. Ted was admitted to Yew Haven Hospital twice. He was admitted to Wesley Hospital. He's had numerous doctors' visits and treatments. Ted is the type of person that if he asked you to do something, and I often volunteered to help him out during a stressful time. His wife has some serious medical conditions. Just to give you an example, he, I called him Tuesday and his wife was going to the eye doctor, obviously she was not dry, so I offered to take her. When I went to my home, to his home, he said, Joe, the only way you're taking my wife is I'm going to pay you and you're going to take my dear, just a white Jeep, so I didn't want to have. So I said to Ted, I'm not taking your money, Ted. Yes, you are. He starts to take out some money. I said, I'll tell you what, that money, you're going to give it to me and I can do what I want with it? He said, yes, you can. It's your money. I said, great. I want to give it to Marietta. Your nephew's having a baby in April and I want her to buy a baby gift. Ted takes off his oxygen, he's on oxygen now, he sleeps where you find him at night. Takes off that oxygen and he says to me, Joe, you got one over on him. I can't wait to shoot the shit again when I get out of the workshop. When I visited on Wednesday, he said to me, I didn't think I was going to wake up this morning. He said, I went to bed and I just didn't think I was going to make it. But I found out when I took his wife to the eye doctor, she said, Joe, I was up all night long. I just kept going downstairs and then reclining to see if he was breathing. Ted and his wife Marietta are very concerned about the proposed solar next door to one A in Chase Hill. I can't say that this proposed solar project next to their lovely piece of property that they have lived in for fifty years has caused all of Ted's medical conditions, but it certainly has contributed greatly to the condition he is in from when I saw him in March, when I first met him. You know, he's eighty-six years old. They've been married for many, many years. They can't enjoy the comfort of their home and their surroundings. He told me, he said, Joe, I'm a nervous wreck every day. He just can't stand it. You look at his property, it's the only guy I know eighty-six years old that cuts his grass twice a week. Just not a blade of grass out. He has, from what I understand, I've met two of them, he has two nieces and a nephew. One niece took vacation time from Florida to visit him in Yew Haven. The other niece that lives in Boston took vacation to spend time. When I went to visit Ted at the Clipper when he was rehabbing, we went to his room and he wasn't there. That kind of shocked me a little bit and then I could hear his voice in another room. His niece was there to take him out and go home for a couple hours. He just misses his home so much. I said to Ted, what would you like to do, Ted? This was Wednesday. And he said, you know, I'd really like to go out in the woodshop and shoot the shit again. And I said, I'll tell you what, I'll take you out there. We'll go out, we'll light the fire and we'll just shoot the greens. Last thing I want to say to some people here tonight, please leave Ted and Marietta and all the other residents alone. Don't be following your neighbors and harassing them. Let Ted and Marietta enjoy their golden years together. Because you've made some poor decisions, don't affect so many other people.
Hey, guys, guys, Joe.
Oh, sorry. Please, please. I didn't say a word. That was him.
Can I say something? Excuse me, I was at the post office today. I thought, wait, he was not on oxygen. He was crying. Okay?
I just can't believe what I'm seeing. Maureen, please begin with Mike.
I can't believe what I'm seeing in this community and the vision that you all have created with your unthinkable decisions to rezone, spot zone, put this huge destructive maneuvers into the lives of people everywhere in this community. I sit up and cry when I see these things. I'm upset. I can't even tell you how upset I am. And it's just not me, you know, it's not even my property or anything, but it does to people when these things happen on their, you know, near site and then here. And one thing I can't, as an answer, is this all happens so fast. How can all these laws be changed and all this destruction happening to our lives, to the creatures, to the trees, everything? How can this happen in a year like this without any other input? Besides, there's few people that are here at the moment. How come the whole community isn't brought into this decision making? And who actually brought it down to you to say that you can do this zoning? Who told you you can do this and what laws were created under the table to make this happen? Or what's getting deregulated? And can we re-regulate? Because this is ridiculous. This is ridiculous that we're taking the land that is so sensitive to flooding, as we can see, okay? I want, and I want monkey rings on, I want to see why there's not monitoring the water treatment on all these properties to see what's actually happening with these floods. Who's being affected? What's being affected downstream or down the hill? And what's going to happen when these things are maybe perhaps destroyed by a tornado or God forbid a hundred mile an hour wind and they get disintegrated? Then what? Okay, so number two, too fast, okay? This is all happening much too fast for anything. And then, and I remember when this first started, I asked for a moratorium. I wanted people to know, I wanted this all to be public and put out in the open and nothing happened, okay? All these meetings are hidden here and there and changing here to there. And it's like you're wanting it not to be talked about. I don't hear it on the radio, I don't hear it in the newspaper, all once in a while. This total disregard for our climate and the effects of the deforestation that's happening and the soil disruption and everything that is happening is just so, it's annihilating and it's affecting people. It's affecting people, the way they live, the way they think, the way they breathe, they drink water, okay? And you don't see the problems now, but I do. I see the future. It's not so bright under these little purses you're talking about. And you want more and more and more. And now that you've already let all of these happen, now are we even supposed to let it all happen just because we've let these happen and now we're going to let everybody else happen? Winnie's shocking.
Maureen, do you have any questions relative to this specific application?
Yes, I want to know what changed the laws to make it possible to build in these places to do this, to change a residential zone to commercial.
Again, that's a more general question. Do you have any questions? We're not the ones.
Should I go to Mr. Brian Kennedy then and ask him?
No, you can talk to Jim Lea, Peter, you can talk to me.
Why not Mr. Kennedy?
Oh, he can call us.
Who would be the one?
Jim Lea would be a great resource.
Yeah, Jim.
Jim, do you have any specific questions on this application?
I'm the planner of our town, but it doesn't seem like any of you have any power. Sorry, ma'am.
Again, Maureen, we're not on trial here, okay? We're trying to take some public comment. Do you have any questions?
This is my comment. What else do you want?
Do you have any questions for the application, Mr. Scott? Any other non-abonors, sir?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Michael Grills, I live at one thirty-five Chase Hill Road, that's. I talk in circles, so I apologize for that. I have a few points I'd like to make and I appreciate you hearing me. Number one, as I just listened to this gentleman, in nineteen sixty-six, when Ted Dian moved in to Chase Hill Road, I was seven. He'd just bought a brand new club cadet riding mower. So had my father, saving nineteen sixty-six. I went over to see him. Back then, you didn't have to call ahead of time. Introduced myself, I was a little kid next door. He showed me his lawnmower and he said, you want a ride? He showed me his lawnmower and he said, "You wanna ride in it?" I said, "Sure, I've been riding these since I was four years old." Got on it, rode around a little bit. And then I asked him if I could wash it for him. He said, "Sure." And I washed it for him. He got me a sponge and some soap and I washed his cup cadet truck. And I felt so proud. I saw Ted last Saturday, I believe, a week or so ago, at his house. And I walked in and I said, "Hey, you mind if I wash that lawnmower for ya?" And he laughed like that. Picking his head after that gentleman's talk. Jim said at the last meeting that he got in touch with the neighbors to talk about this and nobody came. I went to a planning board meeting about a year ago at the town hall. I said very few words. I think a couple days later, I had a cell phone call from Jim. He said, "Hey, can you come down and talk to me?" I said, "Absolutely." I went down to his house probably within ten minutes and we sat in his basement and we had a nice chat. I felt awful for the situation that he's in. I also told him that there was no way I was going to approve of the zoning change on your property. But fully understand the predicament that he was explaining to me. We had a chat and we talked about other stuff. I called you, you left and that's the way it was. But Jim stated that nobody came and I heard that and I was, we did talk. And I came when he asked me to talk. I'm against this. I'm against this for all the reasons my cousin Nikki has stated. My grandmother, when she first bought that property, her and my grandfather, on a hill, we're talking a little history here. I can remember when I would visit her as a kid, she would tell me, "You know, Michael, if it wasn't for your grandfather, we'd probably own most of the property on this entire hill." But he never wanted to take any risks, I used to say. I was a kid, I didn't understand. But I've been thinking about things like this as this controversy, if you will, has been going on. I see in the paper. I'm not the lead, I apologize. I don't know all the specifics that you folks have been dealing with. And I appreciate what you're dealing with. You're between a rock and a solo panel. I believe in solo. I do. I believe in solar on roofs. I believe in solar on contaminated properties. I believe in, I believe in those applications. There is, there is a use for a solo. I believe in it. Not. Not. It doesn't belong. I own, I'm not an abbot, but I own about forty acres across the street. I don't have a plan on touching it. I have five young adults. You know, they watch me and I hope they learn from me as long as they can. I'm wanting to keep the property the way it is. I own a hundred eighty-five acres on that hill, not contiguous. And I try and keep it nice. That's my, as my cousin was remarking, my stewardship. And I'm grateful I have the ability to do that. I'm not stupid. I get it. I have the ability to do it and that's what I choose to do. I don't choose to cause trouble with the town. I don't want any trouble. I also wanna say, "Live and let live." This gentleman has all the right in the world to do what he wants on his property. I have no say. It's not my business. Vice versa, that's how I feel in my heart. And it could be the Joneses, the Smiths, whoever, it's not the family. Never had any problems with its family. It's wrong to have it. Another time. Quick. You know, the last meeting, we were talking about, um, honeybees, dragonflies, bats. I spent more time in those woods. At least the living people left. There probably anybody in the room could be wrong. Um, we had honeybees. We had a orchard. It's on my cousin's property now. Um, we actually are replanting fruit trees. I'm replanting fruit trees over property that I own. I wanna get honeybees back. Though I'm a lot of red. I'm an nature guy. If I can keep it going, I wanna keep it going. Last time, as a general comment, as I watch, as I go around the town, see what everyone else sees, I use an analogy, hopefully you can follow. Sometimes I'm in the woods in the summer. I'll be out pecking on a stone wall, going into an old stomp. And all of a sudden, I'm shocked. Here comes a bunch of yellow jackets out of a hole. And it's a shock if you've ever like just stirred up a yellow jacket death and you're not ready for it. They're nasty. They're nasty little creatures, and not honeybees. And when it first happens, you get shocked. And if you're not quick enough, one, they'll catch you, sting you. And if they injure you, you get angry and scared. Get away. It's happened to me a number, number of times over my life. And I thought about that for a minute and I said, "You know, I just went in there and destroyed their home." That's their home. By the right of my mind, I just went in there and destroyed their home. They're pissed. Excuse my language. They're upset. They're upset. They don't know anything. Their life has wrecked their entire home. They have to rebuild it. That was what I think. And I am happy. But I regret that. But I really appreciate your time. I appreciate the, what you folks have about in the middle of it. And, uh, it's all I got.
Thanks, man.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you for having me speak this evening. My name is Dina Grills Petrosky. And I...
Dina, Dina Grills Petrosky.
Yes, I'm Nikki's sister, Michael's cousin. Dina Grills Petrosky. And I'm the owner of 115 Oak Street International and co-owner of 113 Oak Street, um, which are not a letting of their neighborhood, but is to 201 Chase Hill. Um...
Oak Street.
Oak Street, sorry. Just around the corner from me. Just a little better. Um, for the record, I oppose to propose amendment change from low-density residential to commercial and oppose to rezoning that amendment change from RFR eighty to commercial for 201 Chase Hill Road. Um, I'm concerned about the precedent that's been set with the spot rezoning for one property owner's particular purpose. And in this case, it's the location of a large solar field for how I perceive a narrow, winding rural road. And of course, I'm concerned about the keen interest from townspeople that the matter of a large solar field placement remains sort of out of control of the townspeople in a way. Um, I'm concerned mostly about the impacts of solar for the folks that live in the vicinity of 201 Chase Hill Road. Um, there's still some questions that I feel have not had answers. Or, um, one is the matter of how the solar field would be built at the entry and exit point for the trucks and other heavy machinery that would be located to 201 Chase Hill Road. Um, at the last level of hearing, it was mentioned that everything possible would be done to ensure that the trucks would not enter and exit at 201. But ultimately, to my mind anyway, what that means is until there is a formal mandate in place that will keep trucks off Chase Hill Road, that's where they're gonna be coming and going. And that's a tight, winding area, but rural spot. And building a field and then maintaining the solar field would mean for the foreseeable future, those that lived in the area of 201 may be impacted by that. Additionally, there was some brief discussion about access to 201 via Route 216. And, um, that the idea of heavy machinery could potentially enter and exit that way. Um, but I don't believe that there is, um, any, um, ready way that, where you can make that possible. So, um, that's some of my bigger concerns, the impact of the rural road. And, um, there was a time, not that long ago, where Chase Hill Road was a place where unfortunately, people would drop an old unwanted couch on the side of the road. And my dad and my uncle would take it upon themselves to pick it up and dispose of it. And often, very often, a litter of unwanted kittens would make their way near my house. They'd be dropped at the corner of Chase Hill and Oak Street. My grandmother, with some regularity, would take them and rehome the kittens and, uh, keep a couple for herself here and there. And Potterville didn't want the expanded substation, so it ended up at Chase Hill. And I guess what I'm saying is that Chase Hill should not be a place to tuck in the last solar field needed for Hockington before it wraps up its solar ambitions. Um, my properties and the adjacent properties, I feel, would be negatively impacted by the solar field and we should seriously consider them, the ramifications and the future impacts of the solar field located in their midst. And I respectfully submit my opposition. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, dear. Any other non-aboters? Eric or...
That's Melissa, just in case, as we wanna... I'm Luther Davis, 100 Seabirds, Wicked and Mike, Seabirds, Seawood Lane. At the previous council meeting regarding the Chase Hill solar project, an outside expert was brought in. By the developer to present information regarding the effect of solar projects on home values. The basic input, as I heard anyway, was that solar projects either have no negative effect or actually increase home values. Now, one of the projects used to justify this conclusion was a project in South Kingstown. The location piqued my curiosity. Why? Because South Shores Village sounded like a really good place to live. And because Councilwoman Davis and I used to live very, very near that location. We know the area. We still have friends who live near the location. And because the information provided on home values was so good, it bothered me. Frankly, I was jealous. So the first thing I did was check on the solar project. What I found was that in December of 2018, South Kingstown rezoned an approximately fifteen acre parcel of land off Canyon Way to allow the owners to obtain funding via a ride-in, uh, grant or Rhode Island department for remediation and cleanup of a waste site. Now, per the information I found, the cleanup would be followed by the building of a solar energy system. Of importance to me was that the cleanup site information dovetailed very closely with a disclosure that was given us when my wife and I first moved to Rhode Island and bought a home not far from this site in 2000. Of importance to this body and its consideration of the matters before it is that I drove up all the adjacent roads leading up to South Shores off of Bradley Village and Shannon Road, looking for the solar farm. This included Canyon Way, which turns into a dirt track. I admit that I went only so far up Canyon Way as I felt safe, even though my vehicle is four-wheel drive. So it's quite possible I did not go far enough. It's also possible that there is another access to the site that I did not find, although I went up several of the roads near the intersection of Shannon and Bradley Village. Now, I did not find a solar farm or evidence of any industrial work. This does not mean that it's not there or under construction, as the press reports I found indicated. Only that I did not find it or the access road or the power, power lines. It also means that if it's there, it's not readily visible or that the power lines run in different way in order to access the grid. What was not visible from Canyon Way, at least the part I traversed, was visual evidence of South Shores. And this is the housing project that was quoted by the expert as being here in Rhode Island. The same applied in reverse when the likely solar area was viewed from South Shore Village. A diligent review of a map of the area shows a considerable amount of old forest between South Shore and any likely solar site. Now, I also visited South Shores Village. At South Shore, I spoke with the sales manager of the developer. This is what I found out. It's a fifty-five-plus condo community of what appears to be manufactured homes ranging from fourteen hundred to two thousand square feet. Currently, there are only houses and the obligatory gatehouse marked with front entrance. And there are lots and lots and lots of pieces of construction equipment. Anyone who has visited one of these fifty-five-plus communities will be familiar with the concept. There are lots of small, very small lots containing houses cited cheap by Jalen. These are not custom stick-built homes. A customer or buyer must choose from a limited number of designs. Section two is currently under construction. The number of the lots in section two, but not all by any means, are under deposit. To be constructed soon is a houthouse, which will hold housed two pools. Included with the construction of sections three and four will take golf links and road access into the Warden Pond section of Wakefield. Many home sites are the same price, but some favorite sites, such as the ones adjacent to the golf lane or the lakes, will carry higher prices. Prices of the homes start with the base price. From there, one must add money to cover the upgrades. Upgrades include everything from a garage to flooring changes to cabinets and many, many other items that most people would like to have in their home. This isn't unusual. You look at the model and you go from there. Anyone who's purchased a home in a large infrastructure subdivision, something that I have done several times, where a builder or builders is putting up a large number of the same house designs, understands the experience. You choose from the options and upgrades that the builder offers and that's added to the base price. That's what you pay. In the ca- case of South Shores, you can start with a base price of $398,000 for a fourteen hundred square foot home. Then you add the options and upgrades. It's easy to finish up within spitting distance of $500,000 or more for a fourteen hundred square foot house. Larger homes obviously can easily exceed this figure. The point to be made is not the price of the homes in South Shores Village, is whether the rising value claims made at the previous meeting were based solely on new construction comparisons of the base price versus the fully optioned upgraded sale price from a year or so ago and what it is now. And that those price increases by the builder are unaffected by or enhanced by the adjacent or projected adjacent solar farm. If this is to be accepted, I must point out to the council that in response to both direct and indirect... and indirect questions, the sales manager at South Shore stated quite pointedly that she'd been there since the beginning of the project and that she knew nothing about any current or future solar construction. Now, this doesn't mean that the solar farm is not going to happen, nor does it mean that the builder is unaware of it. It does indicate that it is unlikely that many prospective buyers are making buyer decisions based on this knowledge and thereby justifying the builder's price increases because of a positive response to having a solar farm next door. I admit I can't prove this beyond doubt without interviewing many, if not most, of the soon-to-be Section 2 South Shore homeowners, who would be the ones who are buying in 2019 and 2020. This I have not done, so I cannot let you draw your own conclusions. But what bothers me most about the presentations on home value I've seen and listened to is that the homeowners are asked to take the opinion of a developer's expert. At the same time, few proofs are available that actually show what an existing Rhode Island home's value or sale price was before it became the neighbor of a solar farm and its value or sale price afterwards. Even the developer's experts who have been brought before us, and I don't mean just Chase Hill, were brought before us to testify about home value effects included in their remarks versions of this fact. Hockington now has enough solar farms built and building in our neighborhoods that an independent study might be reassuring to our residents. But it will take time, and the support of the town council for this to happen. Such studies don't have to cost a lot of money, but I do know they do cost some. But until then, all a Hockington homeowner has to go on to protect his or her greatest investment is personal instinct and the safeguard of distance. Now, let me end by saying that what I presented is a result of my own curiosity, research, and investigation. Councilwoman Davis did visit South Shore Village as she visited the projected site at Chase Hill. But this is her own due diligence. Tonight, as with the rest of the council, this is the first time she has heard this presentation. Her impressions from her business are her own, what I have presented here are mine. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
If you have any questions, included in here is some of the material, including the maps and information on Chase Hill. There's also an article that was put into the South County papers regarding the solar project.
Can you give me your copy?
I put it on the thing. If you need a second, I have it on.
So in a minute, Eric Goodler, 1956, in a minute, I'd like to explain my objection from earlier, and I also would like to ask a few questions of the developer through the chair. But before I do that, I'd like to provide a little context to this discussion. And I'm struck by the fact that when I look around the room, and I just, I do want to take a second to just look around, and I have many new friends in this room to mention, people that I didn't know a year and a half ago, people I've gotten to know, and people who I've learned to value very highly as friends. And the reason I've gotten to know these people and value them as friends is precisely because this town council has devalued these people and their lives so brutally. One of those people who has become a friend recently is Ted, we've heard a lot about, but I want to talk about him a little differently. Now, I was introduced to Ted Deon by Clay Joe Burrow. I've only known him about six months. I've talked to him a number of times. I've visited him in Yampahaken two or three times. I've visited him in his rehabilitation center in Westerly. I've been to his home, you know, while he's struggling on an oxygen tank. I called him today. For the record, he's not fine. He couldn't speak to me because he was in the midst of receiving some treatment, so I'm going to see him tomorrow. Okay? Now, the thing about Ted is, we could use a lot more people like Ted in this town. He's a very rare individual. But what strikes me about his relevance to this proceeding and to what you're doing is the fact that Ted purchases property, as you just heard, 1966, 55 years ago. Ted's worked for every penny he passed. His father died when he was very young, and he had to leave school when he was 60. So, and he's a very smart guy who didn't receive the benefit that most people in this room received of having a full education. I don't think he went past it in high school. His property, he purchased 55 years ago. And when you walk around his property, you will see the result of 55 years of effort. He's rebuilt those stone walls. His house is meticulous. He cuts his grass twice a week. That's the least of it. He has numerous outbuildings and a workshop and antique sheds that he has either, you know, moved from somewhere else or rehabilitated. He has gardens. I like to garden. His gar-, I envy his gardens. He's 35 years old now. He has several magnificent oak trees on his property. I asked Ted, how on earth did you manage to save these oak trees from the gypsy moth infestation? You know, Ted, being just a very practical problem solver, decided that as the gypsy moths were defoliating his oak trees, he was just going to keep them hydrated. So he just soaked them nonstop with water, and they're unscathed. I wish I were so lucky. And there are many of them, and they're really beautiful, beautiful specimens. Ted has a couple of nieces and a nephew. I think he and his wife, Mariette, don't have any children, and I think it's their plan to leave the property and the family, and they're very lucky, and I think that's a great legacy to have. Ironically, or sort of coincidentally, I find it very interesting that on the other side of the project are Chip and Chip Hile and Emily and Shumpchaining, who moved to town recently. As you know, Emily's joined our planning board and has been a really tremendous asset. Chip has spoken to you a few times, and he's very thoughtful, very well-spoken. They came to town, they came to Hockington for its rural character. They purchased a house. I've gotten to know them a little bit. And every time I go over to visit, you know, say I'm going to visit Ted and I drop in on them, they're working on their house. They're showing me the progress on their gardens. They're painting. They're sanding. They're improving. They're on it. The only black mark against them is they have a child in the Charahose School System, so we gotta, you know, acknowledge that. They're costing us money. I know you hate that. But they are Ted and Mariette 55 years ago. That's what they are. They're almost the same age, you know, as when Ted moved into that property. So here you have these bookends on this property. And to me, these two families are icons, you know, they're symbols. They're representative of all these other people in this room who've been coming to hearings for many months, pleading for you to understand that, in fact, you know, we have a comp plan, and we have a zoning map, and we divide the town into residential and commercial and manufacturing districts. And Ted and Mariette and Chip and Emily, who are by now very embarrassed that I'm still using their names, and, you know, all the other people in this room that I could name, they bought their homes, they have the confidence to buy their homes and to invest this blood, sweat, and equity, their time, their money, because they had confidence in that regime, in that comp plan, and in a town council that would have the integrity to protect them. And frankly, you have not done that. And we are back here today with another threat to another group of families because you're entertaining this proposal. Now, specifically to the objection that I was raising before, I'm sort of incredulous that we're even having this conversation. But, you know, we just had to abort the hearing, and I guess, I don't know what the word is, we didn't continue it, but we terminated these hearings for Project at Zero on Main Street for Atlantic Solar because a developer came in, wanted to add a property to his plan that had never previously been noticed. It didn't go through the planning board. It was a completely radically different plan. And you can't do that, I don't know this young man here, but I assume is sitting in for Mr. McAllister. But this, and Mr. McAllister finally, with a lot of prodding from Mr. Hurst, you know, grudgingly admitted that, yes, you can't do that. You know, we can't really have this hearing on a plan that was never noticed that was in a pro.
That's on a prior project. We're coming to...
It's directly relevant, so I'll move on.
Yeah, just move on.
Well, this is the same thing, folks. You know, you noticed, I mean, I'm sorry, this proposal went through the planning board and it had a particular configuration. And it was noticed a certain way. And you do not have the authority or the latitude to negotiate a completely different proposal that has not been through the planning board, that has not been noticed to the public. You just can't do it. That's why I was objecting, and I don't think that is at all appropriate to do that. Okay? So if they want to abandon this plan and they want to come back with a new plan, that's legal. These sort of negotiations are improper and illegal, so that's why I was objecting. Now, I had some questions for the developer. You know, I didn't manage to go to the hearing two weeks ago, but I watched the video. There's no transcripts yet. And we've heard a number of times that the developer promised that he would make plans available to abutters. That didn't happen. I helped them turn the lights out today in Town Hall, and I was looking at the hearing file, and it wasn't there when I left, when Town Hall, I mean, when I left Town Hall. So I do have a question through the chair to the developer. I haven't heard the answer to this yet. Why? I've heard that it didn't happen. So could we ask that question to the developer? Could we please understand if there's any reason why those plans were not brought to Town Hall?
I'll ask you. Mr. Sirda, I want to answer, I guess, I know that the last hearing...
I think there's a discrepancy in that. As one of the objects said, there is a set of those reports at Town Hall. So if the town, I'd be happy to submit additional copies, but your clerk does have one on file at Town Hall.
Oh, okay.
It's simply, I believe it's simply the additional reports that were brought that were included in the appraisers' report, and I believe there is a copy at Town Hall. I'd be happy to supply additional copies.
Was it sent in the week after Steve?
That has been at Town Hall for some time, and there are additional copies at Town Hall. I believe the issue here is the allegation about just the additional packets that were included as part of the appraisers' documentation, which your clerk does have copies of.
Okay. Hold on, please. Let me just get to the point. Eric, does that answer your question?
Well, I thought that the, I thought that the... Well, first of all, the clerk did tell me that nothing had come in since the hearing, only whatever had been submitted as of that date two weeks ago. So if something was supposed to be delivered between the last hearing and today's date, nothing new has come in. So I'm not sure exactly what the nature of the promise was, but not a single document was delivered to the town clerk between the last hearing and today. Okay? That's why I, and there are copies of some documents there, but I don't know what documents appear now.
All right. So let me just interrupt one second. So, Mr. Sirda, just so we're clear, anything that you can check that Lisa, not now if you don't want to, I'm not sure what's there, what's not there, it seems confusing to me too. Whatever you kind of called us at the last hearing, please make sure Lisa has these copies for Hockington.
I will resubmit at least three sets of the entire, all of our documents to avoid any issues. But there have been no additional plan sets submitted or in part of this application, the packets that were submitted to the town council prior to the last meeting. I will make sure that there are additional sets of those, as well as the additional or documents that the appraiser used in his presentation, brought to the town clerk. It was my understanding that there were a number of copies there, and I will make sure that additional copies...
I appreciate that. I'll clear it up. Thank you very much. Eric, do you want to finish, please?
I think you want to. I would just like to speak to my, because we're directly relevant to...
I'm not ready, so...
Yep, sorry. The clerk hailed 211 Chase Hill Road. So with regard to what was available at the clerk's office, I have right here, this was given to me by the clerk...
Is it complete as far as you know?
Well, I don't know, because I don't know what you guys received at the last hearing.
Okay. Well, we're going to clear that up. He's promised me three exact copies.
Well, just to clarify, from what I remember at the last hearing, now, I've been looking at the transcripts or rewatching this.
The reading.
It's fine. I just, it came up, they said that they had provided materials for the abutters. I spoke up just at the very end of the minute. I spoke up and said, we hadn't received any of that. At that point, I believe it was you that said, they should, could they please provide everything that the town council had been provided that night to all the abutters? If I remember correctly, that's what you asked. Now, which I thought was...
Town clerk's office, yeah. I said, abutters demand this, folks.
No. The intention...
No, he said the clerk's office, so, folks, the abutters can't view the package.
The way I understood it, maybe I misunderstood. I thought that those packages were supposed to be dropped off at the clerk's office enough for the abutters to have that material.
No, I guess...
Well, I guess I misunderstood then, because I went the next day knowing that they wouldn't have it, but I wanted to start the countdown essentially. And, you know, so I said, okay, and I'm here, I left my name, phone number, and said, I also asked to receive one for Ted, in this situation. I said, please notify me when they come back, because they have been brought in.
He's going to make copies, so we'll get that cleared up.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, that's great. I appreciate that, but our hearing, by the time those copies come out, this hearing will be over. So it doesn't really do much good for the abutters and the public that want to address the lengthy hearing that we, you know, we, the developers provided their three hours to give their, you know, their speech on what's going on. We asked to have access to that same information so that tonight, we could actually speak to them. So it's great, I appreciate you offering those, as you get them, but it really doesn't help for tonight. So my question, I don't even keep continuing to cut Eric's time here, is what are the repercussions of this?
Again, I asked at the last hearing if the copy would be available at the clerk's office. I guess, to some extent, I'm still unclear whether some things were there, so, again, again, it's the burden of the applicant in returning to make sure that they comply with what we asked for. Again, I'm still unclear as to what was there, what was not still there, but again, we'll try our best to get the information, most likely, because there still has to be interconnection, expert to testify. We're going to continue the hearing, so, but again, you know, yes, Mr. Sirda?
Ms. Luthoff, I'll be here till the end of the meeting, and people would like direct copies, if they provide me with an electronic email address, I'd be happy to send them direct copies of the entire packets, as well as the appraisers' documentation. And the same, if they leave their information with a clerk, I'll do my best to forward them as well.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Sorry for any confusion, folks.
And just to clarify, what I was told, that this was a copy that was submitted with the council's copy, and it was just a spare, I guess, that had been dropped off, and Lisa suggested that I could borrow it, which I appreciate, you know, so it was a good look for this.
If anyone needs a full copy, give Stephen your email address, he'll email it to you. Thank you.
This is for you, Chip, for the town council.
I want to clarify, since I just came from Town Hall, there's a lot more on file than that white binder. Okay, that's, that's not the entire complement of information that's available in this hearing file. So I just wanted to know that. You know, just a couple of points, the types of things you're able to discover. If you do have the luxury of going out to Town Hall during the daytime, during business hours and spending, if there's only one copy, you can only review it there and figure out what you want to copy, which is what I did today. And you learn things like, even though the, even though the plan presented to the planning board was, you know, 12.9 acres, it's 13.1. Even though the plan to the planning board was 2.7 megawatts, if the plan says 3.3, these are minor discrepancies. So I don't think that's a big deal. But then, you know, nowhere in the narrative description of this in the initial letter that was provided last January or anywhere in the narrative description isn't exactly clear how the property is going to be subdivided. So you actually have to work at it and you have to find the total parcel. It's 23.3 acres. And then the portion that would be subdivided in the existing house is 2.1. So then you have to do some arithmetic and then you find out it's a 21-acre commercial parcel they want to create in this neighborhood. So I mean, I don't think that's ever come up. It's sort of shying away from stating the facts because 21 acres of commercial property could be.
I would like to say that Mr. Chirincio said at the meeting that we had the 21, that they were going to ask for that subdivision at that capacity.
Give the acreage? Did he give you the acreage for the commercial parcel?
Yes.
Okay, I missed that. But these are the sorts of things. And then, so you know, another, just a small thing because you're not going to discuss it tonight. Although in the past, you have set monetary amounts for financial securities, which, you know, we have an issue with. But their, their reforestation or as sometimes people call it, deforestation reserves about $25,000. And that works out to about $1,900, a little less than $1,900 per acre. But we just found out through planning board proceedings for another project where Crossman Engineering came in and did a calculation, that Crossman believes the proper calculation is something more like almost $8,000. So your, your reforestation reserve of $24,000 or $5,000 needs to be over $100, you know. These are the kinds of things I think, you know, abutters, if they have the time and the luxury, you know, might want to go to the plant. And, you know, back to this, you know, I made this specific objection. But I do want to say, just going to read something. I'm going to put this in the record. This is testimony of the Hopkins and Town solicitor in a prior proceeding in response to some, you know, some attempts to discuss, discuss various issues in the hearing. But what's important is the response. This is Mr. McAllister's guidance to the town council on May 13th.
Yes, just discuss something we do at the meeting.
This is very, this is, I'm going to close. Mr. McAllister says, first of all, the only legal question before this council, which is before you tonight and through these hearings, is whether, this is precisely a parallel sort of proceeding, is whether or not the application for the zone change and the application for the change to the future land use map attached to the comprehensive plan would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's it. So when you get to this, this other discussion, well, what, what really, what the other person's really getting at, I think, is what the real issue is. I'm sorry, it doesn't really matter. The other issue doesn't matter. What really matters is, Mr. McAllister on several occasions has said, the only question before the council is whether or not this proposal is consistent, consistent with the comprehensive plan. And the other document that we rarely seem to discuss at these hearings is the advisory opinion of the planning board, which reviewed this very proposal to give an advisory opinion. To be complete about it, they were giving an advisory opinion about whether or not the proposal was consistent with the comprehensive plan. That was the only thing they were advising on. And they moved to advise the town council that the planning board does not support the proposed zoning map and future land use map amendments based on lack of consistency with the Hopkins comprehensive plan's natural resource goal number one, to preserve, conserve, protect, and protect the natural resources, land use goal number one, protect the quality of life and rural character of Hopkinton, and land use goal number four, preserve existing working farms, wildlife, wildlife habitat, and future land use map. That's why we're here tonight. That's why you really can't proceed to determine anything's consistency with the comprehensive plan other than what you have right in front of you. And in my view, we've said many, many times, we have no business even being here, talking about the plan, the environmental impact and where the transformers go. And all this stuff is completely irrelevant. We really should only be talking about whether or not putting a 20-acre commercial property with 13 acres of solar panels next to two families that anybody would be privileged to know and live next to and have lived in this town, whether that's consistent with the comprehensive plan and the promise that you've made to every family in Hopkinton through these instruments, the comprehensive plan and the zoning map. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Dick Noel, of the Lee's Land. I was not sure that I would speak tonight if I heard some concerns brought up by property, buddy property owners, by Mr. Davis, that I just wanted to kind of drop a little helpful head about evaluation. It's kind of been, every homeowner is concerned about property evaluations. And it's kind of been the bane of all of these hearings that we rely on experts. And every time I hear particularly property valuation experts, I think back to the 50s when the Lakey's meeting took back all the cans under the same obvious. Somebody had to draw up studies to show that that wasn't so. And they knew they couldn't do that, but they could sow confusion. Like commissioning studies to show the thing they wanted to show. You have enough money, you can pay the property people, you get the study to run, you get the appropriate sample, you ask the right questions, you throw away the ones you know like, and then you publish the ones that you do it. But I can tell you that when all of this started happening, we discussed it all, my wife and I did do the South Shore Village because we were concerned about the fact that somebody was trying to plop a 150,000 facility in those areas. And we asked them specifically, was there any intention to put solar insulation anywhere nearby? And they assured us that there was not. Or maybe they misspoke. I don't know whether it was, it was, but I can tell you that we expressly asked and told that that wasn't the case. So bottom line is an evaluation of this. I think that you certainly, if you've got the money, you can pay a real estate agent to come here and tell the council or the residents anything that you'd like to. I will apologize. If you can't find a real estate agent to do that, I think you can probably find the parcels, right? And then the worst agent that always pays.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Have you spoken?
I have spoken.
Okay, now I'll just make sure I get to everybody who has a question and wishes to be heard. Anyone that has not spoken, abut or non-abut, wishes to be heard. Michael Sher.
Rajan Makowski, representing 199.
Can you say your name again?
Rajan Makowski. So we've heard a lot this evening about stewardship. And it was actually raised two weeks ago by Mr. Terenzia when he talked about the importance of the land. And I think that I would respectfully request that the town council go up Chase Hill Road and see all the people who love their land and have invested their heart and soul into it. And then look at the commitment of the people who have come to you this evening. Mr. Hurst said it earlier. He wanted to hear from the people who were impacted by this and see who are the true stewards and lovers of their land in this rural community. And to say to my analogy about the bees, the whole town of Hopkinton has been stunned. And now everyone's starting to speak up. It is important.
Thank you.
This is a client who mentioned, she is a graduate of Carol that is behind the school and was also known, I like to tell, I've been dying, so Ted is quite a character. So I know Ted Dine. And he was so excited about the Chase Hill project. I was in the recovery, had to come all the way to recovery and brought the plans and the property. That's how boy made Ted Dine when I was back in the project. And.
Max, can you hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize for that Chase Hill. I tell you, I've got a toll around the brain. I see most of the council members have a toll on the brain. I know why you do. And I apologize for that slip. Chase Hill, which Mr. Scott, my great-grandfather and his wife, they're immigrants, was found working in the paving, was a paving buddy, working on the granite industry. He lived on Chase Hill Road.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Making me feel bad, not the way we.
And anyone else that wants to be heard tonight? Okay.
The curfew to 11 Chase Hill Road. One thing just as I'm sitting here talking. First, I know there's been a lot of talk about Ted. And I just got to know Ted since March, actually. When he came to our house, he showed us the original plan before the planning board meeting. And he was very concerned at that point. He had a whole folder of it and collecting articles. And I'm very grateful and appreciative that he's done that because we don't subscribe to the Westlake Sun. So we didn't get any announcements. And without his concern and his willingness to share that information with us, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't know about it now, I'm sure. But at the time, you know, I'm appreciative of all his efforts that we're, Emily and I, come here and let's keep it together. Another thing that I noticed has not been really mentioned much, the sort of rural character of Chase Hill. Emily, my house is, what the records say was built in 1800. It's a very old house. It's been a nightmare to try to renovate it as a result. But the character is great. I'm sure we got these massive granit logs that formed in our foundation. I'm sure they were custom from the west of the town. Directly across the street, there's a sign that says Hopkinton Town. I'm sure that must be a historic site in town. Our house doesn't happen to be this historic site, but I'm saying I think that's built in 1800. The reason this came up is I noticed on the pamphlet I had said that Hopkinton was incorporated in 1757. So our house, you know, a few decades later was actually built there. And I think there's something to be said for preserving not only the rural character of Chase Hill Road, but the history of Chase Hill Road and our house being an example on all departments. And we renovated it. We've seen some really, you know, this was a post-bean house. It seems really cool, but you know, wooden pegs that are holding together the structure. And it fills us with like a sense of pride. Unfortunately, she brought over some of those things. But it was not meant to be a fancy post-bean house. This was a, you know, a house that farmers built to support their family and probably cut the trees, used the lumber from their home lot to build the house. So we're not doing a house like that on the street. But I think it actually would be a shame that it is such an old house directly abiding this proposed amendment to commercial property. And I think all of us can agree that putting a commercial, commercial use only area next to anything, whether it's listed as historic or not, but has significant historic relevance to the town and community. I think that's something that really needs to be considered. And I've thought about it, not just for us, but the general.
Thank you. Thank you, all right. Yes, Joe.
Joe Wro, Old Eagle Road. For the record, I want to say that I supported Mr. Terenzia in a couple of his comments at one of the meetings. And we talked after about that. So I even started off by complimenting what they're trying to do with the family compound. I think that would be a great idea. I think they have a family compound and that their children live there. Which just brought my attention, I hadn't thought about it. I would like a unedited copy of this video. I also want to verify that Meredith has heard the comment that Mr. Terenzia had said to me. I also responded to the police officer in the back of the building. And normally I wouldn't ask for this, but due to what has happened this weekend with two residents in our town, again, where a police officer had to be involved in filing a report, I want to make sure that that is on the record. And also get a copy of the video, please. Thank you.
Anyone else speaks? Yes, sir.
My name's Steve Moffett, Diamond Hill Road.
I'm sorry.
Steve Moffett, Diamond Hill Road. I just want to make it, this is going to be real short. This was in some paperwork house Hannah, in regards to this project. Now, this property is located entirely within a natural heritage area per the Rhode Island geographic information.
Who's that?
She's got a title. The property is located, and you have all this information, but I just want to state that. The property is located entirely within a natural heritage area per the Rhode Island geographic information system and located in a primary protection zone for the Hopkins GIS map three groundwater and wellhead protection.
Just, okay, thank you. All right, anyone else speaks? Mr. Moffett. Mr. Moffett.
Yes.
I also have a question about the second portion of what you said.
Do you have a question or do you want to all distribute it?
I just wanted to know what you're saying.
Oh, was it the last part of it?
Yeah, the last part. The last part.
Sure.
You said the natural.
The property is located entirely within a natural heritage area.
And the other thing is?
It is in a primary protection zone per Hopkins GIS map three groundwater and wellhead protection.
Thank you.
And this is where a proposed zone ends.
Okay.
All right. So I think in light of the, some of the abutters wanting to get some material from the applicant's project via email. And Councilor Powell wanted to hear from an expert like this, which is in a connection, first of all, hopefully continue the hearing. At least we need to think of the date and time and place. I'd like to try and do it at Town Hall if you could. Be a little easier on that. Lisa, what are your thoughts?
Are you thinking that you'd like to hold the next hearing in December? Or would you like to go with your meeting here? So are you going to schedule perhaps on a separate night that we typically have had?
I like to hang with life. I usually work, so I'm pretty busy.
So on Monday is what we're going to target? So we're going to have a county meeting on January 6th and that's going to be at the Town Hall and being closed. That is the annual campground night for Reno Field. There's nothing scheduled on Monday, January 13th.
How about that? How about that? So it looks like Sky Avenue, 13th, right? We'll try and do it at town hall. Steve, does that sound appealing?
That sounds great. Thank you.
Does that sound appealing?
Yeah.
All right. So 7:00 PM, 13th of January, continuation. Please make sure the additional copies are available by the time.
Yes, I'll remain here again. I want to, yeah, direct information.
Yes, thanks. Question made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Question, question? Question made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.